It's April 4th, meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to Order, and ask that you please stand with us as we cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summer, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ben Barry?
Here.
Commissioner Bradford?
Here.
Commissioner Morrison?
Here.
Commissioner Pollard? Commissioner Schramke?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Chair Crisillas?
Here.
Mr. Bradford, you have the minutes motion, please.
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes from March 7, 2022 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting as prepared by staff be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Schramke. Are there any corrections, additions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. We have one item of business on our agenda tonight, and that is a proposed zone change. It will be a public hearing. What we will do is, we will read the proposal, the proposed item of business, and then after that, we will allow time for the petitioner to come up and explain what they're doing. After that, the floor will be open for anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the proposal. We hope that you will limit your comments to three minutes. And also, I would ask, please, that you not come up and say the same thing that everybody else has said. If you have new information that you want to share, we certainly want to hear it. And we're glad to have all of you here tonight. So, Mr. Morrison, would you read the proposal, please?
Yes, ma'am. I move that this commission adopt a resolution recommending the B1 convenience and service zone classification for property located at 185 Lyons Den Lane. I further move the following conditions be placed on said approval as follows. One, in no instance shall the site ever be utilized for any automotive use, including but not limited to gasoline stations, car washing establishments, vehicle sales, or rental. Two, in no instance shall the site be utilized as a bar, tavern, or similar uses. Three, any future commercial developments with the exception of expansions or additions to the existing gym building shall have ingress egress on Burger Road to keep traffic off of Lyons Den Lane. However, in the event ingress egress on Burger Lane cannot be accommodated, one commercial ingress may be facilitated no further than 50 feet along Lyons Den's lane. Four, future residential developments may be located off Lyons Den Lane. Five, any future speaker boards from pharmacies, restaurants, or like uses shall be located behind any future buildings and further directed away from existing residential uses surrounding the property.
Second.
Second by Brad, I'm sorry, second by Ben Barry. I think it's important to note that this is property that the petitioner requested be annexed into the city of Paducah. Any property that is annexed into the city of Paducah comes in as R1. However, the use that is currently on that property is a non-conforming use. Now, would you like to explain, Mr. Summer, why a B1 is being recommended?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. The conditions that were just read in the motion were agreed upon by the property owner. In addition to that, there are some features of the site and the area which would facilitate a B1 zone, that it's a transitional neighborhood with single-family dwellings and large lots, places of worship, a utility storage building, and several two-family structures located in the immediate vicinity. The character of Burger Road changes to single-family homes approximately 360 feet west of the site. The site is approximately 900 feet east from Mayfield Road, a minor arterial. The building is a commercial building and not residential. It has historically been used as commercial uses such as gym, a previous gym, church facilities, and a daycare. The petitioner is also proposing possible future townhomes in addition to the gym. A high-density townhome development is under construction north of the site at this time. Three, two-family dwellings, a single-family dwelling, and a church are located between the site and Mayfield Road. In 2018, the average annual daily traffic count just west of the site was 3,182 vehicles. Therefore, with all those things in mind, staff has made a recommendation for B1 for the site to the planning commission, and it's up to this body tonight to take those things into account, plus whatever testimony we hear tonight before they vote. I'd be glad to answer any other questions if the commission may have.
Does anyone have any questions at this moment that you'd like to ask? Okay. Is the petitioner here tonight, and would that person like to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you, Commissioner and Commission Chair. I wrote some things down.
Pull the microphone down.
Okay.
There you go. Good, sweet.
I wrote some things down just so that I would have clarification as I was speaking. My name is Nicole Griffin, my husband Chris Griffin, and I purchased the property 185 Lyons Den Lane in December of 2021, with the intention of relocating my business Tenacity Training. This business has been operational for the past four years as Tenacity Training. I was raised in Vienna, but I've called Paducah home since 2015, so my roots are here now. My husband and I also welcomed the sun this past year, so we are here to stay. Tenacity Training has been a ninja warrior training facility, like the hit TV show on NBC. Our client base is based upon weekly classes, where most of our members meet once a week. Most of our clients are between the ages of four and 16. But we are excited to expand those offerings to adult populations in the future. I was speaking with a neighbor who will remain nameless at this time, the other day, with their concern about the disruption a business could cause in the area, because their neighborhood is quiet. And I looked at them, and I told them that that was the exact reason that we had chosen this property, because we service children, and I wanted to make sure that we had a safe environment for parents to be able to drop their children off to our facility. I knew that this property could be an amazing and safe place to help transform. I saw this building the very first time, and I could see, I am a visionary and a dreamer, and I could see what the future could hold. I pulled up, and I saw when we walked on the inside, where I could help transform a building that was on the brink of falling apart to a thriving business that looks appealing to the people in the surrounding neighborhoods and the many people who leave the golf, the public golf course on a daily basis. I envision adding a small addition to the existing facility to help grow Tenacity Training, sprucing up the landscaping, and helping with the external aesthetics of the current structure. In the future, I would like to develop some property with more residential structures, like the beautiful townhomes that are going in across the street. Paducah and the surrounding neighborhoods deserve someone to love this 4.6 acres and help with the beautification of the area and have that as their main interest. I want to tell you some facts about my business. We are excited to be able to grow here. Tenacity's impact on the community and the surrounding communities is very far-reaching. There are not many people you would encounter in our town who would say that Tenacity was less than life-changing. We have serviced close to 3,000 people since 2019. That data is coming from our waiver system, and a lot of our clients are repeat clients, so we don't always gather a new waiver when they come into the facility. We opened our doors in the old Meyer Lumber Building in April of 2018, and this is kind of an aerial-sky view of some of the impacts we've had on the community so far. We have hosted over 603 kids, our kids from our community through our camps. We average over 100 monthly memberships. Once again, those kids are coming once a week to our nightly classes. We have hosted over 288 different children's birthday parties. So our impact in the past four years has been quite great to our region. My desire is to create a space where people feel comfortable, safe, and capable of reaching their goals and fighting for their visions. It would be hypocritical if I was not willing to stand up here and convey my vision to you. The vision is to become a safe place for all people to find a healthy outlet. I know these goals are big and far-reaching, but I did not choose the name for my business as Tenacity for nothing. I believe that a hard-work ethic, the right people in your corner, determination to always continue learning to be better, and how things are processed is, makes most things possible. That's the reason we're pres, for, sorry, that's the reason we're pursuing this rezoning of property 185 Lyons Den Lane, is so that we can have an impact on the beautification and grow the impact we have on our children in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the commission have a question for her at this time? Question? You may want to sit right here, because there may be some other people who have questions for you in a minute, so, yes, ma'am?
Could I add one additional thing?
Sure, of course.
Um, I made a list on the back. We've already added a new HVAC to the facility, so our investment has already started to flow back into the property as well. So, have a seat on the front row?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wants to speak in favor of the proposal? Please come forward.
Hello. My name is Tim Meadows. I am the parent of a two, a four, and a six-year-old, and my six-year-old goes to Tenacity. My daughter's probably been there a little over a year, and that's what I had planned to get up here and talk about. But really, what I wanted to speak about was Nicole, what she does for those kids and what she does for my daughter is great. A lot of times, especially when you have a girl athlete, it's a male coach. Well, she's got a female coach who cares about her, but also cares about her business. Her business, she's already started making it better than it was. I can speak on it being better than it was, because when it was a gym there, I used to go to the gym there. They had a room in the gym that I wanted to take my daughter to, where she could play in there, and while I went to the gym, but it wasn't in good shape. That room has already been transformed. There was a shower in there that I wouldn't shower in. There's landscaping already being put up that was never there in the whole time that the gym was there. She knows what she's doing. She's going to take care of the property, and she cares about people, so these people don't have to worry about that the business is going to encroach on where they are. I also live on Georgia Street. I'm very close to the, to the place. I'm very, very close, which is good for me now, because we can drive right around the corner. But, so if it was going to be something that I thought would destroy the neighborhood, I wouldn't be up here, so.
Question? Would you like to ask her a question?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you come back up for a second? She'd like to ask you a question, please.
So I assume this building will need extensive renovations?
You know, the guts of the building have been fine. It's more aesthetics at this point.
And are you in, operational in this building at this time? Are you still in your other location?
We are operational in the parts of the building that we needed right now, so yes, but it will still need updates.
Hey, thank you.
Yes.
And let me ask, the addition you mentioned, I think the numbers weren't here, but what do you have in mind for size?
Yeah, I would like to add somewhere between a 3,000 and 5,000 square foot square off the side of the building attached to it.
Can I ask which side of the building? The Lyons Den side or the other side of the building?
The way the HVAC is currently routed through the facility, it makes the most sense to add it on the side that Lyons Den Lane is on, but if that were necessary to be on the other side, it wouldn't take extensive rerouting to make that a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the motion?
My name is Chris Griffin. I'm actually Nicole's wife, or Nicole's husband, excuse me, and obviously a part-owner in the business. But I am originally from Paducah. I grew up here, went to Tillman, went to Clark, played golf, played in the Cobb, been to Paxton Park obviously a ton. That's a building for a long time that I remember pulling out of Paxton Park, and it had gone down quite a bit. The aesthetics on the outside, you know, it's not a very pretty building when you drive by, right? I mean, when you pull out of Paxton Park, we've got this great golf facility for the size town that we have, a public golf facility that, you know, we pull out, and that's the first thing that you see. I mean, it sticks out like a sore thumb. You know, her vision, you know, I'm her husband, so obviously, I mean, I'm very supportive of her, but when she sets her mind to something and when she has a vision and a dream, she really chases it and goes after it hard, and she puts her heart and soul in it. And so when she says that she's going to make the aesthetics of this building look phenomenal, I have no doubts that's what it's ultimately going to do. She wants to be a friend of the neighbors that are there. She wants to continue to grow that area and hopefully make it where it's a thriving area and continues to be a thriving area, and continues to help Paducah become a thr, continue to grow as a thriving community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Martha Emmons, and I think that it's really heartening that everyone in this room is actually probably on the same side, and that side is that we all want something better for Paducah than what we have today. And I understand a fear that maybe something will come in and change our neighborhoods in a negative way, but if you know Nicole, I don't, I'm surprised that I haven't really heard her or anyone say, but maybe everybody knows that she is a national ninja warrior. When you see the TV show Ninja Warrior, and if you know the kind of tenacity that it takes to stick with that kind of training, that tells you a lot about this young lady, and it tells you the way that she sets goals and goes after these goals. And the city and the neighborhood have the opportunity to welcome this young family that, who have chosen to invest in Paducah and also in the Lyons Den neighborhood. When there's a choice of places that would like to have this kind of young family and business owner come there, it's our chance to have them here. Nicole is committed to offering an attractive, well-kept, family-friendly fitness facility with a long-term plan for being a good neighbor and a contributing member of this neighborhood. Her vision stands in contrast to having a big, empty, ugly building, which is destined to rot in place while serving as incubation hub for rodents and garbage. I asked the commission to change the zoning to allow Tenacity the possibility of growth while serving as an asset to the Lyons Den Lane neighborhood that we will all be proud of.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the motion? Come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Toni Strickland. I'm a Realtor here in Paducah, and I've been a Realtor for 17 years. I have both a professional and personal relationship with Nicole Griffin, founder and owner of Tenacity Training. I found it exciting to watch Nicole breathe new life in the building at 185 Lyons Den, just off Burger Road, after seeing it sit idle. She made a significant financial investment in our community when she purchased the building this past December. It's been inspiring to watch Nicole's passion, hard work, and commitment as she began renovating the interior of the building, and I look forward to seeing her vision for the exterior facelift of the building. I know it will be amazing, yet fit in with its surroundings nicely. I admire her passion for engaging the youth in our community, to become physically fit while exercising in a fun, unique, and sustainable way, while teaching them important life skills, helping them set goals, and working with them to achieve those goals. It's very encouraging to visit Tenacity Training and find the youth having a great time using the climbing wall, the spider wall, the warp wall, and all in a safe environment. For me personally, it's wonderful seeing these young people away from their video games and electronic media. I only wish something like Tenacity had been around when I was younger. Nicole is a great asset to our community and well-loved by those who know her. She has perfectly blended her past experience as a teacher and her participation in the Ninja Warrior television series twice, to bring her vision of Tenacity Training to our community. I've found Nicole to take her time when planning projects. She gathers needed information and takes time to process it before implementing any aspect, while keeping in mind how it affects her students and the community. Nicole is a bright, calm, thoughtful, measured person who is honest and of highest integrity. That is why we are here today. She wants things done right. She doesn't want to cut corners. Nicole is an excellent role model for our youth. If you think about it, she is currently working with and making an impact on our future community leaders, and we are fortunate to have her influence. My son and his young family will be returning to Paducah this summer, and I'm looking forward to my grandchildren attending Tenacity and having Nicole's influence in their lives. Nicole has a vision for Tenacity that extends for years to come. I appreciate your consideration for her request of zoning change to make her vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the motion? Then we'll begin. If there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the motion, come forward, please.
My name is Dr. Gregory Cannon, and I have lived in the Wellington Heights subdivision for 45 years, and I'm also a planning professional. As a planning professional, I can tell you that any argument that spot-zoning this single four-plus-acre tract of land as B1 business zone is intellectually dishonest. The fact that the Planning Department staff report relies on factual, inaccurate statements to support their recommendation is proof of that. The history you were provided on this property was only partially correct. This area was abandoned Phase 2 section of the Wellington Heights subdivision, which was still shown as future development on Plaid of Correction, Plaid Book G, page 285. A quick review of McCracken County's website allowed me to find the county zoning ordinance and what was permitted in an urbanizing residential zone. Churches and their customary accessory buildings are listed as a permitted use as is single-family and two-family dwellings, duplexes, and townhouses. Commercial storage and daycares are conditional uses in an urbanizing residential zone. This makes the Planning Department's statement that this area is a transitional neighborhood dishonest and misleading. It is by definition, use, and zoning residential. Reviewing McCracken County zoning ordinance, this building would have been permitted as a customary accessory building for the church. Once this building was separated from the church, it would have become a non-conforming use according to the McCracken County zoning ordinance. The fact the Planning Department recommends conditions that prohibit any new commercial entrances off Lyons Den, and that no automotive use or any type of bar or tavern prohibited, is further evidence they know a B1 zoning designation is inappropriate at this location. A review of the zone map, which I have here if you'd like to see it, shows that the city of Paducah and McCracken County, all the surrounding properties are either urbanizing residential that are in the county, and the only city properties, the entrance to Paxton Park is zoned R4, the closest city subdivision is Wellington Woods, which is zoned R2. The definition for a B1 zone is to provide convenient shopping areas to serve nearby residential areas. That very definition shows this designation is inappropriate. There are no nearby neighborhoods. This is four and a half acres in the middle of four subdivisions, and it's actually part of what is one of those four subdivisions. This property should either be zoned R2 or R4, and allowing the gym to operate as a non-conforming use. That is the most appropriate designation for this property. That allows protection for the surrounding subdivisions. I don't think anybody has a problem with your gym. We're used to it being a gym or a daycare. Every gym that's been in there has failed. I don't, I'm not saying yours will. However, if yours fails, or if you decide to close, what happens to our subdivisions then? That B1 zone opens it up, and that's not appropriate. We're in the county. We want to be a We want to be away from business zones. That's why we're out there. I realize we're on the edge, but this is four and a half acres, a very small parcel for what's surrounding it. We can see the stars at night. Typically with a business zone, signs have lights. What happens when all of a sudden now we're going to have some big neon sign up there? And those four subdivisions can't see the stars at night because of what we've got on that four and a half acres. So you've been given misleading information, I believe, and I've given you an alternative here, one that I feel is far more appropriate. So I ask that you all not approve this. I ask that this be reconsidered and either an R2 or an R4 zone be allowed. If she wants to do townhouses, R2 or R4 will allow that. The one thing it would not allow is the expansion of that building. And I ask you, with the surrounding of that neighborhood and all the houses that are around there, is expanding that building really something that should be allowed? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Come forward, please.
Hello, I'm Sharon New. This is my husband Randy, and we resign at 160 Lyons Den Lane, which is right across from the gym. My main concern is, what if, what if, I want this to stay an R1, simply because I like McCracken County. I've been in McCracken County all my life, but we just moved in that area in 2019. So I'm not opposed of the gym because I've been there when the gym was a gym. Seen the traffic coming in and out, that's fine. But I just want this to stay as an R1.
Residential.
Yeah, residential. I don't want this to go to the city. I don't like the city. I even work in the city, but I don't like the city. But I just want it to be in McCracken County.
I don't think we have a choice of that. I think it's already been annexed, has it not? So we're not, that's out of our purview. We can't, we can't say that it needs to stay in the county because it's already, they've requested an annexation, it's already been approved.
So does that mean our properties would be in the city too?
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's what we're worried.
That's what I'm worried about, that my property, which is right across the street, would be in the city.
The only way a property can come into the city, be annexed into the city, is by request of the property owner. So you don't have to worry about that. If you don't request to be in the city, you won't be in the city.
So she can request me to be in the city?
No, she can't request you to be in the city. She can only request that her property be in the city. That's all.
Okay. All right, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I think there is some incorrect information that's floating around out there. I can see that from here. I hope you all understand. Mr. Hutchinson, would you like to explain anything about annexation and how that works? Have I, have I explained that properly?
Yeah, yeah. A property can either be consensually or nonconsensually annexed. In the case of this subject property, the property owner requested the property be annexed into the city. So just that specific property has been annexed, and that was approved by City Commission.
Thank you. So anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Sure, come forward.
I was Engineering Section Manager at USEC for 28 years, and I bought the second house built in Wellington Heights. So I'm right across the creek from her place. Been a nice subdivision that has developed, all nice homes, nice-sized lots, and everything else. There's a lot of traffic on Burger, on Burger Road. High speed, it's a narrow, crooked road with frequently wrecks. And she wants to dump a whole bunch more traffic coming out of there onto Burger Road where people speed all the time. There was just a real nasty wreck just down the street a couple of days ago. Because the road is crooked, it is narrow, no shoulders, and if you glance off, you're in a ditch. So if they want to develop townhouses, that's great and wonderful. I would love to see that there. But I hate to see this made a business zone. If it wants residential, stay residential. That's what it ought to be. But it absolutely, no way does it need to be zone business. Any more questions for me?
No, sir. Thank you.
And I knew your dad.
Excuse me. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
My question's probably not so much opposition as clarification. Randall Bogus resided on Clark Lane Road. I kind of hurriedly tried to jot down the list of restrictions, and I noticed one of those was no bar or tavern. Question comes to my mind, where does packaged liquor stores, where are they allowed? Are they allowed in a B1?
They would be.
They would be allowed. So we're, we're, we would allow, we would not allow a bar or tavern, but we would allow packaged liquor, inebriated drivers coming and going and filling up your residential neighborhood, your families bringing their children. You know, if, 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 if we're so developed and she may be in full control, again, is it, for clarification, just one tract of ground? Is it, and although that ground was previously subdivided, is it all in, in one tract?
All one tract.
Okay. So any subdivision would have to come through? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that's, you know, just, just some concerns. I appreciate the restrictions, but I'm not sure they are deep enough, thorough enough, that maybe a residential zone would definitely clarify that, what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak?
I think it should be pointed out that one of the restrictions we have in here is that it shouldn't be used as a bar or tavern.
He's saying retail sales of packaged liquor.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Greg Spees. I live on Long Drive, which is across Burger Road from the development. I don't really know that I'm even in opposition to it. I'm just doing some fact-finding. For instance, the townhome concept would be fine, but I'm just wondering about multifamily dwellings, you know, if it, if it's confined to just townhomes adjacent to one another, or could it go on up like Fernwood Homes is done down on the other end of Burger? We'd kind of like to know that. And the B1, R, the R zone seems to be more appropriate, especially when you factor in with the B1 comes a availability of an alcoholic beverage license. So that's just what I wanted to add to the discussion.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who has comment, question?
Are there towns?
Excuse me?
Chris Chaplin, I'm a resident at Lyons Den Lane. What I'm wanting to ask are, the townhomes across the road, are they already in the county? Are they in the city? Or can that be answered?
They're, they're in the county.
Okay, if they're in the county, then why do the resident, and they're residential, why do the, if she does choose to put townhomes on that side of the town, why does that need to be in the city? Why can't the townhomes be built in the county like they are now rather than be built in the city? It doesn't seem to bother anything.
It, it would be part of that parcel, I think.
And it's already annexed as city.
Correct me, and it's already annexed. What she would probably do is subdivide that property and build townhomes on part of the property. And that would, I mean, it's already annexed into the city.
Okay, in the city, it is annexed, okay? Right now, it's annexed in the city, okay? If it does become liquor store, her business and everything like that, and townhomes do come in there, that puts the price, property values of the city rising. Everything else, either we're county or city, is still going to be based upon the fact of the appraisal of your property around that.
Yes, sir.
So if your property values go up due to her buildings of the townhomes and her business going up, that's going to make our property taxes rise also, and we're in the county. But that's going to be city. So that's something I wish y'all would look at too, because we're going to have to weigh that option to, we've been living there, it's quiet and everything else. I don't particularly want any more traffic on the road. I oppose it. I don't, do not want it. I moved back there like we are now. I like it being quiet in the county and do not want to be with any more traffic whatsoever. And I don't care, everybody's saying that the building is ugly. I've seen barns that, that are beautiful like that, even though they're out in the country. That's the way I prefer it, out in the country and staying the way it is. I like a quiet neighborhood, residential neighborhood. I don't want any business. And I don't want to look down the road at higher taxes either. That's going to possibly move me out of my position of where I live at now. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else that has a comment?
Hi, I'm Leslie Watkins. My husband Pete, and we live on 100 Lyons Den Lane. We built that house there 12 years ago, and we've seen, you know, it was a daycare when we, we built there. And we've seen the gym, we've been there with the gym and all that. And really, I have, we have no problems with her having her gym there. We think she has great expectations, and, you know, we, we, we trust that she will do what she says she's going to do. We just have a problem with the rezoning. Just say, I've lived here all my life, I've lived long enough to know that circumstances and people's lives change in a heartbeat, and, you know, anything can happen. And, you know, heaven forbid that it would, but if it had, if the zoning is changed to commercial, then, and, and something happened, you know, to her business or to her family or, you know, anything like that, then it's a commercial property? What in the world would become of that? I mean, that, that's frightening to us. I mean, we, we have a family, I, I take care of our four, our four-year-old grandson three days a week, and it terrifies us to, to think of what could happen and what could be there if it becomes commercial. And so all we're asking is that the zoning does not change. We don't have any problem with you having your business there, really, we don't. And, you know, we're, the only problem we have is the zoning, the zoning change.
Well, the, the problem is that she cannot do business with, in an R1. She would need another designation in order to do that business.
What if it was R2 or R4? She still couldn't?
No, that would be a possibility.
Okay.
That's why the state allows nonconforming use.
Yes, because the other business gym was nonconforming. And I understand from several years ago that that kind of slipped through the cracks.
Was in the county.
Yeah.
It slipped through the cracks.
So anyway, if it could please not change to a commercial zoning, you know, leave it in a residential zoning, R2, R4, nonconforming, we don't have any problem with that. But we would really, really, really appreciate your consideration to not allow it to become a commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak? I'd like to hear either Josh or Nick respond to that. So why? Could you all ask a question? Would you respond to their concerns about why the designation is as it is and it's not an R2 or R4 request?
Yeah, so the B1 zoning classification is our lowest commercial classification. And so the purpose of that is for commercial uses that are in conjunction or close proximity to residential neighborhoods. And so it would allow for them to be in operation by right, and it would not create a nonconforming use. So when you have a nonconforming use, it places restrictions on that property in terms of future development. So if that building were to be damaged, she wouldn't be allowed to rebuild that structure. She would have to go through a rezoning process at that time in order to rebuild the structure as it was prior to destruction. So there's a lot of issues when you go into the nonconforming side, and it's better to have it classified by right.
Gentleman has a. Can you want to come forward, please? Thank you.
I would like one clarification on the nonconforming. You say if it's damaged or so. Under state law, correct me if I'm wrong, but that says that if it's, as long as it's not damaged by 75% of value or area. So it would essentially require the building to be completely destroyed for her not to be able to rebuild in that situation, according to KRS 100.
Anyone have questions? Ness?
Nonconforming.
Someone?
So what allows you to have an?
You need to come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
So my question is, which zoning allows, would allow in addition added on to the facility as is? For a climbing building or whatever she wanted to add on to that specific building, what zone would it have to, to be in?
The B1.
It would have to be in the B1.
Minimal.
That's really what this is about then.
So I'm clear, she could not expand her business at all if it were not B1.
Could she build a separate building, non-joining?
It would be nonconforming.
Pardon me?
It would be nonconforming if it stayed residential. That's why we are forwarding a favorable recommendation for the B1, so she can expand. And she had mentioned it coming off the side.
I have another question. The gentleman who spoke about the packaged liquor store, the list of exclusions that has been arrived at, that should she go out of business or have some awful catastrophe fail her, and then the property would go to someone else, could that list of exclusions be changed to add that a packaged liquor store would also be one of the things that would be excluded? Is that set in stone? Are those the only exclusions, or could there be a compromise that a few more exclusions could be put in there to set people's mind at ease?
Yes.
So Section 12663, nonconforming use. So a couple of things to point out. A building or structure which is the subject of a nonconforming use may be maintained and repaired, but it may not be enlarged or moved on the lot which it is situated. And then subsection four, or subsection five, a building or structure which is nonconforming then subsection four, or subsection five, a building or structure which is non-conforming either with respect to its use or with respect to its dimensional requirements on the lot where it's situated, which is damaged or destroyed by any cause to the extent of more than 75% of its value or area, shall not be repaired or rebuilt in conformance with provisions of this article.
Other than comments, questions, please come forward.
I don't have any objection to changing the zoning of this to residential 3, 4, whatever it is, but not as a business. I've lived there. I have seen other, I knew the two men that built the church, and then they put some homes in for some elderly people, and then they built the daycare center for the members of the church. And then, for whatever reason, I think one of them's health reason, I know one is still alive. I know his name, know him very well. I don't want to see that go to a business, because I've seen about two or three gyms go in that failed. And if that's made it a business, if that leaves, then it's own business, then ain't no telling what'll go in there. Do you want a business to go in next door to your home? You change that zone residential to business next door to you? Do you want a business go in next door to your house? I don't either. So, you can change it to residential, fine, but don't change it to business.
Anyone else?
I just have one final comment. This property sat on the market for a while. Everybody had an opportunity to buy it, put whatever they want to there. If they didn't want more traffic, you could have bought it to ensure you had no more traffic on your lane. So, they had equal opportunity to do that. Nicole has taken a big investment on this property. So, right now, if her building over 75% is damaged, she can't rebuild it, but she has a very expensive piece of ground. So, I would just like to say, she's made that commitment. I personally know who she is. I know you don't. But the market, property was on the market for quite some time, and anybody could have purchased it.
We're just looking for the commission.
Respect to the...
Excuse me?
A comprehensive plan, in respect to it, city's comprehensive.
Well, since we are beginning to look at updating the comprehensive plan with the county, Dr. Greg Cannon, that is going to be one thing that we should look at, is how that is to be zoned on our future land use map. So, as of right now, since it's just annexed into the city, being R1, we'll need to take a look at how it should remain commercial in the future as part of the future land use map. And as you all are aware, the future land use map is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So, we hope to have that. We've started the initial conversations. So, hopefully, that'll be before the planning commission, at least the goals and objectives.
I know that life happens, but the gym facilities that they've mentioned previously did not purchase the property. I did. They were renting.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
I have a comment. You know, the one thing that I heard that really I agree with, and that is the other restriction being the packaged liquor. What do we need to do to include that in the motion, or can we?
We just need to amend the motion.
Can I propose that we include that restriction?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I do propose that. I think that was a very good suggestion. I think that that should be included.
Do you want to amend the motion to say any liquor sales?
Perfect, any liquor sales.
Second.
Kate can be the second today.
I think that, that the motion.
Is that a motion?
I made that a motion. I think...
Seconded.
It's been seconded.
Second by Morrison.
Before we vote, I think it might be useful to enumerate the uses that are permitted in a B1 zone, and just go and by the ordinance so that, so that everybody in the chamber can know what could possibly go in there in the future under this zoning classification.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Would you like to enumerate that first, please?
The permitted uses for the B1 zone would be any use permitted in the R4, which is single-family, two-family, multifamily, plus professional offices. What would be allowed is home occupations, hotels and motels, funeral homes, commercial greenhouses, assembly buildings of fraternal, professional, and labor organizations, restaurants, cottage homes, enclosed retail, where product processing is allowed only if products are sold at retail on the premises, personal and convenience service establishments, shoe repair, tailor shop, and theater.
And we could amend, just as we did here.
Would the ordinance concerning restaurants that can serve liquor, would that conflict with what we're trying to put in as far as liquor sales?
Just don't make it business.
I don't know.
What was the question?
The question was, he just said restaurants would be permitted, if I heard that correctly. Isn't there an ordinance regarding restaurants that can serve liquor? So, by putting this in that there be no liquor sales, would we be in conflict with saying restaurants?
You could have a restaurant that doesn't sell alcohol.
I mean, I don't know. I'm asking.
We'll have to look that up. Not familiar with the...
And to your point, as I say, the stipulation is the expansion. She can't expand if it's R2, R4.
That's correct.
Yes.
Right. We see that. But I get your point.
If you are considering other restrictions to protect the quality of the neighborhoods, I would request you seriously consider adding one more that prohibits any electrified or lighted signs. Don't interfere with our piece out there.
It's already in place, is it not? Would they not have to come for us for any type of signage? No?
Not for the development. If they did new development, they would, but not for the current.
Yeah.
But the lighting that's emitted from signage or any exterior lighting is to be contained on-site by ordinance.
But when you get out in the county and it's nice and dark, even if it's supposed to be contained on the property, I don't know if you all have ever actually been out in the country, but a little bit of light goes a long way.
Yes, it may.
So...
A comment?
I'm going with the lighting as well. The spotlights that are, that she has up are coming right through my window. They're really bright. I mean, and my neighbor down the street can see of them too. So, they're two big bright lights, which was there before. So, that was my concern too, was the lighting.
I think we can request, can we not, that the lighting be focused in on the building and not externally?
Shielded or pointed down is the terminology.
I think that's a request.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time then. And I will entertain any motions.
I think we already have a motion on the floor.
We do have a motion on the floor. Do we need to amend that amendment to add anything else, I guess is my question, before we do a vote? We currently have on the floor the motion about any type of liquor sales.
Right, and the liquor sales.
Correct. So, anything else that you'd like to request be included in the motion?
Who made the motion to amend the original motion?
I did.
I did. She did, and then seconded.
I seconded.
Do we want to add the lighting?
I think instead of stacking amendments on top of each other, maybe Commissioner Shramky could, could by agreement, expand.
Exactly. That's what I'm wanting to do. If there's anything else we want to include...
If you'd like to add, considering the other comments.
Yeah, the terminology we use, shielded or pointed down.
Add the lights also?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what he's talking about.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Shramky, what was your question?
Shielded.
I hear conversation about the lights. Are we adding that as a restriction also, or requirement?
That's up to you.
Well, you made your motion to add a restriction that there never be a liquor store on the property.
Yes.
Or a business that sells liquor, if that's how it's worded.
Right. Correct. That's the motion that I would...
Well, yeah, what we're talking about is, is based on the public, based on the feedback, that the public would also like a restriction that there be lighting restrictions.
And can I add that is the same amendment to the original amendment?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. So, therefore, the motion that I would like to propose is that there will never be liquor sales on the property and that the lighting be restricted to face into the property and not to the outgoing properties. And I'd like to amend the original amendment proposal for that.
And I would second it.
And that seconded.
I don't think that includes the comment about signage. There was a...
No, it doesn't. That's what I was going to say. Do you have anything?
There was a comment about lighted signage. So... I mean, I think it's addressed by the lighting restriction.
Just for public clarification, if the property is subdivided, then the same restrictions will require or be held to the 2.5 acres and subdivided to some other owner.
Yes.
Just so they...
It runs with the land.
Right.
Just for clarification.
Does the motion, as it stated, the actual verbiage satisfy you guys as far as, I mean, we'll be, we include those restrictions, it will be a, basically a legal restriction on this property and needs to be worded precisely?
What I have now is, the motion is to restrict no liquor sales, and lighting shall be facing inward to the property. What I would...
Excuse me, which would take care of signage? I just want to clarify that, because signage was a concern, I heard.
If the commission would like to add in there no electronic message signs, which I think may be the crux of the question, then you all could certainly do that.
Well, is it necessarily an electronic message or just electronic?
It's the same.
Just electronic.
I think it's just electronic, because, you know, I think that would be objectionable. I think that would cover it.
Would you like to add that into your amendment, Commissioner Shramky?
Second that.
And I would like to second it.
No electric or electronic signs.
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Shramky, one thing that I would suggest on your amendment is to use the standard verbiage that we typically use, which is for lighting to be shielded or faced downward.
That's fine.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or additions that we'd like to add to this amendment? Any other requirements? Is everyone clear on what we're voting for? Would you like to read that again one more time, please?
Sure. The amendment to the motion is to restrict that there shall be no liquor sales. All lighting shall be shielded or faced downward, and no electronic signs.
Is everyone clear? Are there any other comments? Call the roll on the amendment, please.
For the amendment, Commissioner Shramky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Now, now we are considering the main motion. Please go over the restrictions on the main motion, please. We've already gone over the ones for the amendment, but just go for the others as well.
Yes, Madam Chair. In no instance shall the site ever be utilized for any automotive use, including but not limited to gasoline stations, car washing establishments, vehicle sales or rental. In no instance shall the site ever be utilized as a bar, tavern, or similar uses. Any future commercial developments, with the exception of expansions or additions to the existing gym building, shall have ingress egress on Burger Road to keep traffic off of Lyons-Den Lane. However, in the event ingress egress on Burger Road cannot be accommodated, one commercial ingress egress may be facilitated no further than 50 feet along Lyons-Den Lane. Future residential developments may be located off Lyons-Den Lane. Any future speaker boards from pharmacies, restaurants, or like uses shall be located behind any future buildings and further directed away from existing residential uses surrounding the property.
Is everyone clear on what we're, the restrictions and that we're changing, we're requesting that it be changed from an R1 to a B1? Are there any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Shramky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Thank you very much. If there's no other business to come before the commission tonight, we appreciate you all being here. And our next meeting is May the 5th.